I would like to call to order this, uh, meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and the time is five P M. Uh, we will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence. Uh, keeping in mind many victims, innocent victims of this war in the Middle East. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. Would like to remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum that govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and shall not interrupt a speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any event individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience stamping your feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. And, uh, also reminded any person desiring to speak before the Commission shall complete a comment card, um, including their full name and address and a numbered agenda item. And the card should be delivered before that agenda item is brought up for discussion. Thank you. Um, Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There are two items, uh, to be added to the agenda, uh, the consented, uh, calendar. Items, uh, seven-ten, seven-ten is the cancellation of the regular City Commission meeting of December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three. Also being added is item seven point eleven, which is Resolution number three oh seven dash twenty-three, extending the time to record the plat entitled Transit Village Subdivision and Additional One Hundred and Twenty Days.
Thank you very much. Uh, first item of business is an appointment, uh, Commissioners, I need your approval to reappoint Larry Brown, Larry D. Brown, to be West Palm Beach Housing Authority, uh, for a term of, uh, additional term of four years, um, to expire on November fourth, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, could I have a motion to that effect, please?
May I remove approval? Mr. Brown's reappointment is supported. He's knowledgeable, very involved, and an excellent participant and board member.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
They moved a second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item of business is the consent calendar, items seven point one through seven point eleven. President Warren?
Seven point ten.
All right, seven point ten. You have a question?
Yes, sir. Um, back in August, I recommended that we, uh, adopt a resolution that we have one City Commission meeting in the month of December and that we do not schedule a second commission meeting, uh, in December, uh, right around the time, uh, that this meeting is, that we're asking to not have, um, at December twenty-sixth. And I think that, um, I'll, I will support this, but I think that we should consider moving forward, moving to one meeting in December.
Um, we have, um, done a poll, if you will, of municipalities in the county and, um, my recollection is that there was no other municipality, that, that only the council meetings in December. Is that, is that my recollection correct?
Yeah, I don't recall the results of the survey. It was sent to the, uh, Commissioners, but I, what I would suggest, Mayor, if the Board is considering going in that direction, that we bring that discussion so, uh, to a work session so we can have the survey up at the time that you all just...
That's fine. We'll follow up. Okay.
Follow me? And, um, when we have that conversation, I would like us to also consider the, uh, topic that I raised during that meeting where I also wanted us to consider having a bi-month during the summer where there were no commission meetings. I believe that that would be a great opportunity for staff to continue to work on the initiatives that they're working on. It will allow for Commissioners to have an opportunity at work-life balance and I think that, that bi-month will allow for opportunity to plan, prepare, and execute lots of things that the Commission puts before the staff. And I would like us to discuss that as well during the, uh, workshop.
We can certainly bring that up for discussion as well. Anything else on consent? Any other comments on any of the consent items? Seven point one through seven point eleven, uh, hearing none, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
May I remove acceptance of consent calendar, items seven point one through seven point eleven?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, now we move to the quasi-judicial portion of the meeting and, uh, Commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures, please. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Commissioner Fox.
As to items eight point one and eight point two, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Very good. Thank you. Madam President, are you ready?
Mr. Mayor, as to matter eight point one, I have had ex parte communications, uh, with the presenters. I have not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. As to i- item eight point two, I have not had ex parte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. As to items eight point one and eight point two, I have not had ex parte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor have I received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you. As to item eight point one, I have had ex parte communications with the applicant. I have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. As to item eight point two, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And I will make disclosures in the event that I have to vote. Uh, as to matters eight point one and eight point two, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I requested these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would anyone wishing to speak on items eight point one and eight point two, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, that the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item eight point one, Resolution number two-five-five dash twenty-three. A special site plan review request by Jeffrey Sanon of Pillar Consultants, Inc. on behalf of Legacy at Forty-Fifth Street LLC to allow for a multifamily residential development consisting of forty-eight affordable residential units on property located within the industrial zoning district and various requests from the city's zoning and land development regulations. Who is, uh, speaking?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I present to you Ms. Tammy McDonald and Mr. Byron Jones of the Palm Beach County Housing Authority, who will be providing you with the applicant's presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As, uh, Kelly indicated, I'm Tammy McDonald. I'm the Chief Development Officer with the Palm Beach County Housing Authority. And this is Byron Jones, who is our partner with Movie Gold Loop. We are pleased and excited on behalf of the Palm Beach County Housing Authority Board of Directors, our C E O, Carol Jones Gilbert, who couldn't be with us this evening, our project team, as well as ourselves, to present a high-level overview of a new approach to solving the affordable housing crisis in Palm Beach County and West Palm Beach. This is the, in, in red, you see the, uh, site that is located at forty, on Forty-Fourth, Forty-Fifth Street, just east of Military Trail. It is approximately a hundred and twenty feet wide or frontage on Forty-Fifth Street and it's a very long parcel, as you see. We are limited in space. So pursuant to, and thank you for Resolution three oh six dash twenty-two, we are able to present a forty-eight unit multifamily residential community that will be one hundred percent affordable, i.e., all of the units will house folks that are eighty percent and below the area median income. We are able to do this because of that resolution in an industrially zoned, uh, designation area. There will be three buildings of sixteen apartment units apiece, um, twenty-four-one bedrooms, twenty-four-two bedrooms, with thirty, sixty-one surface parking spaces and additional bicycle parking, as well as there will be a common area barbecue and picnic area in the way of amenities. We submitted our site plan back in May of this year and we come to you today to present this overview. You can see a three-D rendering of each of the three buildings with the parking and the bottom right-hand corner is Forty-Fifth Street. So you can see that this is a rendering from the Forty-Fifth Straight, Street, um, viewpoint. The project will be built utilizing steel structural, excuse me, steel shipping containers and it will be fabricated in a factory such that we will have the opportunity to have control over the precision and make sure that all of the units are properly constructed and they are uniform. Um, the, one of the reasons that this is a benefit is that it allows us to be able to control the cost, i.e., we don't have onsite increases in, in concrete and, um, roof trusses and all of the various building components because we go to contract with the fabricator and their contract includes a cost that is cost-specific and there are no changes to be made. Additionally, they are delivered, the units are delivered ninety percent complete to site and therefore they are put together onsite pursuant to the building codes here in West Palm as Wes, as well as the Florida Building Code. The, um, manufacturer's in the process of obtaining Florida Building Code certification as we speak. So they will be tied down properly. All of the hurricane concerns that we have will be satisfied. Additionally, they will be, because of the construction and the manner in which they are constructed, they'll be sustainable and green, um, energy efficient because the exterior will utilize foam sprayed-on insulation as well as other, um, components to create that. We will use impact windows and all of the uni, all of the buildings will have elevators. Let's just take a quick look inside. As you enter each unit, on the bottom, uh, left-hand side, you have the two-bedroom unit, two-bedroom, two-bath. And on the right-hand side, you have the one-bedroom, one-bath unit. And each of the units will be smart homes. So what does that mean? That means when you enter, there'll be a digital panel and it will control the lights, the air conditioner, and plenty, many other electronics, whatever the tenant chooses. Um, there will be U S B outlets within the unit. There'll be L E D lighting throughout the unit, um, including there will be L E D lighting under the kitchen cabinets to present, uh, a very nice look. And we'll be using stainless steel appliances, stainless steel or chrome fixtures throughout, low-flesh toilets, shower heads that use, uh, low-use water. And there will be islands in the kitchen, built-ins in all the closets. So these units will rival your market rate units in terms of their offerings. They will be, um, they will be very, very similar. You ask, what are the affordable housing options? Well, we have two tiers. First, we have the city of West Palm Beach that is providing funding under Home and Hopewa. And we will have ten Hopewa units and four home units. The second tier will be the thirty-four remaining county units that will provide housing for persons of eighty percent and below the area median income. That will make up the one hundred percent affordability of all units. Here's our capital stack. The funding came from a senior loan at five and a half percent with Florida Community Loan Fund, a total of six point eight million dollars. The second loan from Palm Beach County at five and a half percent, zero percent interest. And then the third loan, a grant from the city of West Palm Beach, at one point two-five million. Um, there is an affordability, affordability period related to the West Palm Beach loan of thirty years and thirty-three for the Palm Beach County loan. Because these units will be managed by one of the, uh, the nonprofit arm of the Palm Beach County Housing Authority, the spectra organizations, management organization or a management company, um, the units will remain affordable into perpetuity. We have no intention of selling this property to anyone for market rate use. We will keep it. And then, of course, Spectra donated, um, the land within equity at two point two-five million. Tonight, we come to you and we ask for approval of various variances. You saw the size of the property. It's very narrow and long. And to be able to maximize the density and get as many units as we can so that we can try to serve our, our needs, um, to the extent possible for affordable housing, there are some concessions. So one is, um, in the area of landscape islands. We're asking for a variance of three landscape islands from eighteen to fifteen. We're asking for a variance on the eighteen islands that would be required and some of that is because, again, the size and the amount of space that the property has. And we're also asking for a variance on the width of the landscape islands. Um, parking-wise, the normal requirement of the minimum is ninety-five units. Based on our experience, we found that, uh, many people that, that need affordable housing and the housing that we will be providing, they don't require parking. They don't all have cars. So we're asking for a variance and of having sixty-one units. Now, the, the project is two hundred and seventy-five feet from the nearest bus stop. There's a bus stop right in front of the property that will serve its residents. Many of the low-income residents are dependent on public transportation. Additionally, you have many conveniences around the area and across the street. You've got Walmart, you've got Sam's and Walmart, there's a drugstore, you've got many restaurants, you've got Food Town for grocery needs. So most things are walkable. And then you've got lots of employers in the area because it is an industrial area. So there's a potential for job, uh, job opportunities for many of the residents. So we think that it's a win-win and we will be able to provide at least one space per unit for each of the space, each of the units. And there will be, um, bicycle, bicycle parking as well. I'd like to add right here that the Palm Beach County Housing Authority also applied for a youth build grant and it is a Department of Labor grant that serves teen, youth from eight, sixteen to twenty-four that are at risk. And we'll be able to provide those youth with training. This is the project that they're going to get training on. They'll get some classroom instruction and they'll get some on-the, on-the-job training and they will learn a trade on-hand, hands-on here at our legacy community. And we're really proud to be able to share that we've been able to marry these two projects together to serve the community. Finally, let you talk about the topic.
Thank you. So the purpose of this is that we're able to build our, uh, living units as we do the site work. That's to speed the market and there's a cost advantage also. So hopefully tonight we'll get, um, um, variance approval from City Council and from there we'll start our, um, we're already in the middle of our expedited building, uh, permit process with the city of West Palm Beach. We hope to break ground, uh, we will do our demolition in the month of November and December. It's a very large structure. It's all concrete that we're going to pull up. Um, and then we hope to start our site work in January. Our site work will be ready to take what we call living units in April. And so those living units will start to come in, we start to assemble them in April and we hope, we will finish our project by the end of August and hope to get final C E O in September. And so it's a tight timeframe and you can't miss any deadlines because as units start to come in, it's not like they deliver one building at a time. They, they deliver units at a time and we have our professionals on site. And some of the folks in the youth bill will be able to participate also on a new type of, um, building process that I think would be beneficial, um, for, for this area. So we, we, we hope to finish by the, um, end of the third quarter, beginning, beginning of the fourth quarter when we get our final C E O.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation. Um, any questions for the applicant before we bring staff up? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your work and efforts towards bringing more affordable housing and workforce housing to our city and to the county. I have two questions. The first is about the variance on the islands and I certainly understand the need to maximize space, but I was just curious because those are landscaped islands. Are we, are you all providing la, additional landscaping somewhere else to mitigate the landscaping that we're now missing in this area?
So we are meeting the requirements for the site whereby we are providing forty percent, um, of green space that is required, as well as we're providing the twelve percent, or what is it, forty percent open space and twelve percent green space? Hopefully, I'm not getting them mixed up, but we are providing the, um, required for that area and for industrial zoning. We're requiring the, the required number of trees and so forth. It's just the islands is where we're having an issue. Um, and there will be no impact. Um, we're moving trees around, so it'll, it'll, as you saw on the rendering, um, it should look very nice. And all of the, there will be no impact on the neighboring areas, on the neighbors or on any of the uses. We've gotten our traffic, uh, our T P S letter from the county, so there's no impact on traffic. So, um, I hope that answers your question.
Great.
It's a concrete site right now.
You're speaking to them right because we're taking...
Commissioner, it's completely a concrete site right now. The building sits on concrete from front to back, from east to west, north to south, and so it all gets ripped up. And so as, as Tammy had mentioned, um, we, we were asking for the variance on the landscape islands and we will meet our space requirements for open space. So it should be a really beautiful location once we're done with it with green space in it.
Wonderful. I was just thinking about the families that may be living there and wanting to make sure that we are still providing enough shade and fun landscaped areas for kids to be able to play, um, outside of their homes. So thank you for that. Mayor had a second question, if I might?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, you mentioned the variance in the, um, parking spaces, decreasing to sixty-one spaces. That seems reasonable, but I was just curious if, if you've had experience with this at some of your other sites that might be similar, similar, um, in design, that you've seen this work well?
So there are no other sites that are designed like this one. This is a first. Um, however, as a public housing, um, provider, we have six communities, as well as some Ly-Tec communities, whereby, um, parking, we've, we've, what our experience has been is that not all of the tenants have cars. And so we anticipate that this will continue along those same trend, along that same trend and not every tenant will have cars. Right now, every unit has at least one parking space. And you have twenty-four one-bedrooms, um, so we feel that that would be more than adequate in the way of parking.
Well, thank you for that. I'm, I know that this Commission and administration is a very, um, strong advocate for other forms of, um, transportation, so, um, I look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for bringing this to us. It's very exciting, um, to have more affordable housing coming to the city. I'm curious, when you talk about the shipping containers, it sounds like it is very innovative and a great kind of workaround for materials that might not be available. But I'm wondering, I'm not familiar with any other, um, any other, uh, areas that where we've worked with the shipping containers and actually developed homes. I think I've heard about it in Las Vegas or maybe even in Fort Lauderdale, but I'm not sure of any that are in Palm Beach County. Is this something that you've worked on before and how, I'm just curious, like, how do we know, um, some of the things you talked about, like hurricane resistance and other issues that we might be facing in Florida, um, you know, with something that is kind of untested? I'm just curious if it is something that you've worked with before?
Sure. So that, so that the, um, supplier that we're working with has built, um, shipping container, but they were market-rate townhomes. They were beautiful. What we did is that in this case, that we had our own structural engineer hired here from South Florida along with a, um, um, M E P engineer to reinforce, ensure that we meet wind mitigation. And the only reason that was really important because it's going up four stories. So there are the single-family shipping container homes done here in your backyard, but no one has done multifamily. And so as we had said earlier, this is a proof of concept in trying to meet a market need and we're confident based upon the engineers and the professionals that we hired locally to work on this project that, um, from a, um, standard standpoint, from wind mitigation, will be fine.
President, uh, Warren?
And I believe, uh, and I don't know if you mentioned it during this presentation, but I believe that there are impact windows and doors throughout.
Commissioner, the, the manufacturer for the impact windows is a local company that was just purchased by Pella, uh, which is a, one of the largest window manufacturers in the world, but, uh, it's called Los Blossom and they manufacture here in South Florida, um, impact windows and doors.
Excellent. So there's job creation in that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? If not, any cards? Oh, no, let's hear from, I'm sorry. Let's hear from staff first.
May I have?
Yes, she has another comment?
I'd just like to add that if any of the Commissioners would like to have a presentation in more detail about the community, uh, we'd be glad to provide that at your convenience. Just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from staff.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, Kevi DeFrank, Senior Planner with the Development Services. And I will be presenting staff's findings and recommendation for the subject agenda item, which is, which includes Resolution number two-five-five dash twenty-three, which is to approve the special site plan review and variance request to allow for the affordable multifamily housing development project known as Legacy at Forty-Fifth Street, which the applicants thoroughly presented. And I want to, um, highlight that contrary to the last paragraph on page five in the staff report, what's indicated in there, um, after further review, it has been determined that the building height proposal complies with Resolution number three-zero-six dash twenty-two and therefore no further modifications to the proposed building height is necessary. Um, and therefore, staff finds that the request, subject to the conditions of approval, um, that the request complies with Section Four of Resolution number three-zero-six dash twenty-two. And therefore, based on the information provided by the applicant and the evidence gathered and reviewed by staff, staff recommends an approval of Resolution number two-five-five dash twenty-three. And here are the con, conditions of approval outlined in the Resolution number two-five-five dash twenty-three. And this concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll move to comment cards. We have one co, thank you, sir. Have one comment card for Michael Cleveland.
Good evening, Mayor, Staff, and all the audience. Michael Cleveland, West Palm. Uh, I'm not sure. I heard, uh, um, a request for variance for parking, uh, for not enough units or not enough parking space per unit. Uh, under assumption that every tenant may not have a car. Uh, and, and I disagree with that for a couple of reasons. One is that the parking space should be allowed for a tenant, even though they may not have a car. There's nothing saying they won't get a car in the future. I mean, we're moving on up, if you will. The other thing is they will help visitors periodically, the family members or other guests. So I think it's imperative that at least one parking spot be allowed for that person, for that tenant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, uh, President Warren?
I'd like to say that, um, when I reviewed this information, I did see that there are forty-eight units and sixty-one spaces. So, um, in your presentation, you acknowledged that there's a, that there is a space for each unit and there is an overflow of spaces in addition to that. Um, so I, I do think that that is beneficial. We'd, we'd always like to see more parking spaces, but I do believe that the amount, um, that have been presented are sufficient. And during our, um, strategic planning session that we had a couple of years ago, I raised the point of activating this space here on Forty-Fifth Street and that is in that, um, commercial, uh, that industrial... And that is in that um commercial, uh that industrial corridor. And I think that this is a great vision and a great catalyst and a way to stimulate um that area. I think that it is important. So there's there are many different ways that I look at the positivity in this, the affordable housing, the fact that um everything and it is new, the finishes are new, that there's no segregation of the people that will be um in in particular areas, that um the affordable housing will be dispersed throughout the buildings. And um so we're we're certainly looking forward to that. But again, I'm I'm looking forward to this being a catalyst to other activity that that can occur along that Forty-Fifth Street corridor.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Uh hearing none. Madam President, then would you like to make the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of resolution number two-five-five dash two-three based on the findings that the project, subject to the to the conditions set forth, and the resolution complies with the interim standards standards established by resolution number three-zero-six dash two-two.
Thank you very much. Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now turning to item eight-point-two, resolution number two-six-five dash twenty-three approving the replat of approximately one-point-two-four-five acres, fifty-four thousand two hundred forty square feet of real property generally located at four-four-five DeTura Street, as is associated with the Watermark Senior and Assistant Living Residential Project.
Good evening, mayor and city commissioners. Chris Kermely, urban design planner. Uh this is for the four-forty-five DeTura Street replat. Uh this is for what is known as the Watermark Residences or Senior Living. Again, located at four-forty-five DeTura Street. Uh the site plan approval was completed in March thirteenth, twenty-twenty, and was again amended uh in March this year. Uh it is a senior living and assisted living facility with a hundred and fifty-four units and seventy-three licensed beds. Uh it is an approximately one-point-two-five acre property. Uh the construction was finalized and CO was obtained in early summer of this year. Uh the ownership group there is wishing to aggregate this site into a single development tract and then just detail all necessary and associated easements. So there's a couple FPL easements, aerial easements, uh as well as parking and access easements on the property as well. And staff recommends approval of resolution two-sixty-five dash twenty-three as the uh plat submitted uh complies with the comprehensive plan as well as sections ninety-four, forty-four, and ninety-four, three, forty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations. Are there any other questions?
Very good. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? This uh President Fox, no, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Not a question, just mostly a comment. I had the opportunity to um go to this building on the opening and it is absolutely stunning. It is such an incredible addition to our downtown. There's a movie theater, there's a bar on top with a pool, there's the closets are the size of, I think, my entire living room. So I am just very happy to to welcome them to um the neighborhood. It's just a really beautiful building. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other uh questions or comments? Is that card for this item? Okay. All right, um. Commissioner Fox is in your district. Do you want to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number two-six-five dash twenty-three creating the plat entitled DeTura Senior Living Community. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, and the findings that the request complies with all applicable provisions of chapter one-seventy-seven Florida statutes, the comprehensive plan, and the standards in section ninety-four dash three-forty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Very good. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. I'm sorry. And um since there is no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um we now turn to comments from the public. We have a few cards here. We'll start with Matt Luciano.
Hi, I'm Matt Luciano. Looks like we moved really fast tonight. There were some other people that was going to join us. Um there was a CNA meeting the other night. I don't know if you guys heard, um most of the people there were against the the new plan of eighty-one-eleven. Um Flagler Development there, eight stories. Um we have a petition going on online. It's over five-hundred-and-thirty people. There was a vote at CNA meeting. Over two-hundred people were there. It was fifty-seven percent of the people were against the new plan. Um so I think that uh it's very, very um, it's unequivocal about what the community there wants and desires. It's, they're okay with the prior plan. They actually wish if no changes happen at all. Uh we all bought into that. We bought into um single family and and less density. And I actually want to applaud the lady that was up here before me, um doing a nice plan. I'm sure she listened to the community. Um affordable housing right up here on Forty-Fifth. That's only four stories. Um I mean, maybe that can go eight or ten or twelve, twenty stories. Um that would be great if that's what that community wants. But ours does not want eight. Um and I could tell you that uh something like Casa Mar would be a little bit better. That's two in the front and a few in the back, very low density. Um I'm sure a lot of other people are going to speak uh when they come, and I could tell you Flaglers, answers were extremely evasive um on what intelligent people were asking them, who had time to plan and really question. And um you know, you, the pictures looked like a mile off, so the buildings look smaller. Whoever, you know, I guess some people got a different look at them. They said they were terrible, atrocious. Uh I can quote some of the people. Uh something like horticulture program would be good down there, maybe a little B and B, a couple of stories, uh more parking, more parks. You know, we we just don't want that, this vibe down there. And that's okay. You got, you know, come up into the city, stay down in the suburbs, and that's fine. I mean, here we got all your, we got all your vape vape stores and uh, you know, wh- wh- you know, all the dispensaries. And keep that up here. That's great. We don't want that down there. Uh it's bedroom community. We have kids and we want them out there, not seeing all that stuff. And um I I think that's all. I mean, here's the petition with five-hundred-and-fifty. We have another two-hundred that Rosie's going to come with, um that I don't have. But it's, and I could tell you, people went door to door, and most people don't even know it, know about it. And the ones that did answer and did sign, it was, it was uh ni- ninety-five percent were against it. And most didn't know about it at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Donovan Murdock?
Good afternoon, uh mayor, uh vice mayor, council. Um.
State state your name and address for the.
Donovan Murdock, from the Palm Beach Rams football and cheerleading. We are here just to see if we get some recognition from the city to help with a certain thing that's going on. Uh we sat down, we talked with the city parks and rec about certain things, and they abide by it and they give us certain things. But certain things that we're struggling with, and we need help from the city with it. Right now in the community, we serve two-hundred-and-fifty kids in our program. That's seventy-five percent from West Palm Beach and uh how many from other places? Twenty-five percent from other places. What we're asking is see if we get some help with transportation, police officers. You know, because we're coming out of pocket to pay for police officers, which is pretty expensive for us. Because we're a nonprofit organization and we do it all on our own. Also, we have four teams that made it to the championship from Gold Coast and Pop Warner. And nobody seems to even recognize us. We got two teams right now that's going to the regionals, which is national championship they're going to play for, for Pop Warner. So we're just asking for some help. We're going to have a presentation right now, but we'll come back with a presentation to show you what we're doing for the community. You know, it's everything we're doing is coming out of our pocket, and we just need some help from the city to help us out.
Yeah, uh I'm Corey Tate. I'm vice president of Palm Beach Rams. Um we're a nonprofit organization. Um and I want to first acknowledge Kathleen Ward, Commissioner Ward, and Commissioner Fay Johnson, our city administrator. Uh they both are aware of the issues that we were having going through parks and recreation. Um but we want to just bring it to you guys to make you aware of what's going on from a nonprofit organization in your city that, excuse me, I'm going to be a little blunt, that you guys were funding PAL prior to this. We were both coaches in PAL. This is fifteen years ago. And PAL, as you know, has left, and that funding has left. But that funding transferred to our two pockets, our nonprofit organization. Because we know the value of of um sports in our community, especially for urban or black minority, I'll be more specific, with black men and women. And that's what we do. We have black women and women. When the PAL was there, there were three teams, two cheerleaders. We're here now, we have seven teams and five cheerleaders. We have two, like he just said, we have two teams that are now going to nationals in Pop Warner.
All right. Th- thank you very much. If you had filled out a separate card, you'd have gotten a full three minutes, but you just.
Well, we'll be here again.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Uh next card, Elizabeth Munnings.
Good evening to the mayor and to the commissioners. Uh we, we thank you for all of your good work here in West Palm Beach. I'm here to complain a little bit. Uh I have a historic house, uh nine-fourteen Tenth Street, between Douglas and Tamron there. And I've, uh, we have renovated the house. And we have a group of people who are willing and ready to tear up everything that anybody tries to do. And I just wanted a little bit of help here. I know you're saying, oh, call the police. Well, we do that. And we have signs all over the place at all. I happen to have rented one apartment this week. The lady stayed there two days and she called me this morning and told me she was moving because she she's miserable. But these people come in there all night, doing their smoking the pot and drinking whatever they want to drink and tapping on the windows and doing everything to make them miserable. And I am just, uh I I I'm bewildered. Uh we have people who care nothing for themselves and they care nothing for anyone else. And I just hope that some way, uh as the commissioners, as uh as a city, we can do something to try to make these people miserable since they want to make everybody else miserable. And uh and that's in that area around uh Douglas and Tamron somewhere uh from Tenth Street, right in that area there. And they're, they're just keeping everything all messed up. And I tell you, I am just, uh, I'm I'm bewildered. And I I'm, I came, I made a special point to come here today to sh- to share my discomfort with you. So I I I hope that we can do something to make these people miserable as they're trying to make everybody else miserable. Okay. And uh as I said, my my uh, my house is there in the uh between Douglas and Tamron on Tenth Street. And uh if if you can do anything to help them, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um can you, Armando, can you speak to her, get her address, and then we'll pass that on to uh the police chief and see if they could put that on their radar? Ma'am, if you could see the gentleman walking back with the tie? Okay. Uh Michael Cleveland?
Good evening again. I actually had no intention of speaking in public comments, but I'm prompted by the comments of one of the commissioners on the gentleman I made one-one. I'm very sure, one thing I do, I do hear very well. I hear extremely well, and I'm sure I heard the presenters speak something to effect about some of the tenants not having parking because of their not needing, they don't have a car. And that's not really the issue, whether they have a car or not. The issue is that, and I'm sure you guys agree and pass anything you want. You know, we can say what we want, whatever. It doesn't matter. But the issue is that whether they have a car or own a car or not, and whether there's enough parking spaces or not, every tenant should have a parking spot designated for the apartment they live in or for the fact that they're, whether you got a million parking spaces, don't matter. So I'm going to review that tape when it comes out. You know, maybe I didn't hear it because I came in late, but I'm sure I did. So you need to, well, anyway, you guys, thanks, good evening.
Thank you very much. Do you want to respond to that at all or just leave it alone?
I can.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Sure, because the presentation identified that each unit does have room for a parking space. There are forty-eight units and sixty-one parking spaces. So there is enough spaces, there are enough spaces that are available for each unit to have uh parking and for uh some guest accommodation.
Okay, thank you. Um and Ms. Johnson, you're on top of this uh, the football situation, Parks and Recs. I know you've had some meetings with them. Do you, are you going to follow up on that or is there any follow-up?
Excuse me, mayor. Yes, I will follow up. Now, I will tell you in terms of the ass. You know, this is the first I'm hearing of the ass of the city, and that's something we have to look into in terms of practices and procedure as it relates to other nonprofits.
Okay, I just want to make sure that somebody on staff is at least uh addressing it, or at least hearing or having a conversation with it. Okay, thank you. Okay, uh we will now turn to comments from the deists, and we'll start with you, Madam President.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. I would like to invite everyone within the sound of my voice to join me on Saturday, November fourth, at Dreher Park for the two thou- two thousand twenty-three ceremony and walk to defeat ALS at nine AM. ALS is a progressive neurodegenerative disease that attacks motor neurons in the brain and spinal cord. This results in the wasting away of muscle, loss of movement, and eventual paralysis. ALS affects people of all races, ages, and genders. Please come out and support the twenty-twenty-three walk to defeat ALS Saturday morning at nine AM at Dreher Park. November is National Men's Health Awareness Month, also known as Movevember. Movevember is an annual event involving brave and selfless men around the world to grow mustaches during the month of November to support and raise aware awareness of men's health issues like cancer and mental health. It's a challenge encouraging all men to go to the doctor to get their annual checkup and to be aware of their family history and adopt a healthier lifestyle. Uh when's your birthday, mayor? What month is your birthday in?
September.
September. So during your birthday month or during November, I encourage you all to get colost- uh colonoscopies or digital prostate exams, and those are great, they're great months to remember, right? It's easy to remember your birthday month, easy to remember November with men's health. Make sure that you're doing all that you can in order to have.
Why are you calling me out like that?
Because I care about you, mayor.
Mayor, do we need to correct the record?
About my birthday date?
Yes.
No, it's in September.
Okay, we're going to correct the record.
I don't know what she's talking about. Continue, please, Madam President.
A huge, huge congratulations to our very own Commissioner Fox on receiving the Championing for Change Award uh from the prestigious Grow Lit Project last night at their annual literacy gala. The Grow Lit Project, Inc. is a nonprofit organization that is dedicated and committed to enhancing early learning literacy among youth and underserved and under-resourced communities, and we know that that is certainly a priority for our illustrious Commissioner Fox. So congratulations. Um and a Haunted Car Wash uh is being presented by Mint Eco. Um it's a two-night special event happening to. Um, it's a two-night special event happening today and tomorrow at eighteen ninety Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, uh, from three to six PM. Come out and enjoy the festivities. There will be thrills and costumes. And the event is free to everyone, and we are wishing all families and kids a wonderful and safe, happy holiday.
Thank you. In case anyone is concerned, I usually go get all my full checkup at the beginning of the year. It's not my birthday month, but January is pretty easy to remember. But thank you for your concern, I appreciate that. Uh, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few announcements. This Thursday, uh, November second, we will be having a CRA, uh, meeting in the historic Northwest at the Hart and Soul Park. It begins at six PM. Um, there's gonna be a lot of, um, different members of city staff on hand to answer questions about Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful, different safety initiatives. And we'll also be, um, having a presentation about the Sticks Promenade for anyone who missed our open house last week and is still interested in applying for the two Sticks properties. So that will be this Thursday at six PM. Right before that, um, we will also be having a fruit tree giveaway at the Hart and Soul Park. So beginning at five PM, uh, members of the Sustainability Department will be there on hand with, um, fruit trees. I know we've had a lot of requests for fruit trees in the neighborhood. Um, and so if you are a city resident, you can come by at five PM while supplies last. Um, that is at the Hart and Soul Park. This week is Mobility Week, and in partnership with Palm Tran, um, the city of West Palm Beach has a promo code, which is mobility twenty twenty-three. And if you use that on your Paradise Pass, you can have five free dollars added, um, to enjoy Palm Tran this week. So again, that is mobility twenty twenty-three is the promo code. Um, and finally, Mayor, I was happy to join you last week, um, to, when you presented the proclamation for National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which is in October. Um, this is the seventy-eighth anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And celebrating our, uh, workers with disabilities, we were joined by someone from Best Buddies, um, local affiliate, and they have successfully placed thousands of adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and competitive and integrated employment over the years. So I was very happy to join you and thank you for presenting that. And also thank you, um, President Warren, for your nice remarks. It was wonderful to join the Grow Lit Project last night. Last week, they also had a book drive at Gaines Park. And so that is really where the magic happens, I think, when you see the faces on the kids coming in for the first time to receive a book of their very own and, um, the excitement and the, just looking forward to the, um, adventures that they're gonna learn about and read about, and it's like a whole new world for them. So I think the early learning, um, eh, what, what the Grow Lit Project is working on with early learning literacy and just the importance of making sure that kids can have libraries of their very own to feel proud of and to start, um, you know, start learning early is just incredible opportunity for our city to be involved with, um, that mission. And so I was very proud to join many of community leaders last night. Um, and thank you for your message, President Warren, and that's all I have.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I want to start by congratulating Commissioner Fox as well. I think that it is a testament that everyone on this dais and in the administration takes time to support our local public schools and our local, um, children. And I think that over the years that I've been a city commissioner, I've seen that grow and that we have, um, found creative ways for the city, city commission and administration to support our local schools. So thank you and congratulations on that rec- well-deserved recognition. I wanted to thank our city staff, you know, as we go to events over the weekend, like the Green Market or events all week long, like the visioning sessions that we recently had, our, our mayor, your staff is dedicated and they are always there and, um, happy to talk to residents and answer their questions. Um, so I wanted to thank them for that, but also ask, and I don't know if this is a, a work session or if this is just a one-on-one meeting, but I have been hearing just that we're still suffering from shortages in, uh, departments and staff areas. And I'm just curious if that's a citywide, um, issue or how we are syst- just systemically working to address that. And we don't have to have the discussion now, but just wondering if either I can have a one-on-one with administration or, um, a work session so that I can just be aware of what are the steps that we're taking to be able to address that?
Well, staffing comes under my purview, but if you have any questions, you can certainly direct them to the city administrator. She, I'm, we're not gonna have a workshop on staffing issues, but she can certainly answer any questions any of you may have. Um, so feel free to ask her, but we won't have a workshop on it.
Okay, well, and I'll, I'll get with Administrator Johnson, but just, um, you know, knowing that we're still hearing, um, that we're suffering from shortages in, in some departments, would just love to hear about the strategies that we're doing to fill those positions.
Yeah, and, and, and suffice to say, we do have a strategy. We are, and Ms. Johnson could go through it. We're taking a number of steps, uh, in order to address it. It's not a crisis, I don't think, um, uh, uh, of, of any sort. Uh, I think also, uh, the, the recent, um, uh, salary plan that you all approved is gonna help us with recruiting. But again, you can go, Ms. Johnson can go into more specific detail with you and, uh, when, when you, uh, meet with her.
Great. I think she wants to say something.
Oh, sure.
I just want to say in general, uh, to the last point that the mayor made, the, uh, salary increases that we put in place and, and primarily with the increases in the grades only went into effect October one, so it's gonna take time. I think the, uh, nation across all industries were suffering with staff shortages, so we're not unique and we certainly were not, uh, immune to that. But the actions that we put in place, uh, to address the major threshold issue that dealt with pay has only been in effect for a very short period of time. So we're not gonna see that rapid, uh, turnaround in terms of staff shortages. But I think that we are on our way, uh, to overcoming that, uh, issue, but, uh, we just need to give it time. Recruitment takes time.
Yeah, Ms. Johnson, when you meet with them, you might also talk about how we are expanding our search, search strategies, et cetera. I, I know we're putting a number of things into play, so...
Sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just have one other item, um, on Wednesday, November first. I mentioned this at the, at the last commission meeting, but on this Wednesday, um, city staff and our, um, engineering consultants through Kim Lee Horn are hosting a meeting at the Mandel Public Library on the third floor in the Hibiscus Room. And this is to discuss, um, the parking issues along South Dixie Highway. And this is for a specific area that we're targeting, that we're looking at to try to, um, work on solutions that then we can hopefully look at, um, expanding in other parts of, of South Dixie. But really looking at what are some of the parking issues? What are some of, um, the neighborhood issues that they're having related to the businesses that are, are using up some of those parking spots as well? And so it is this Wednesday from four to six PM at the, at our city library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations to Commissioner Fox as well. Um, I was, um, sad to miss the event last week because it's probably one of my favorite things, seeing children get excited about reading and going into classrooms. It's almost, um, it's like selfish when you try to donate your time there because you just get, you just get so happy, um, and they make you so happy. Uh, I did want to say, um, adding on to the Rams discussion, I, I do want to thank staff because I think that, um, Administrator Johnson, myself, and other staff from Parks and Rec had a really good meeting with them to kind of figure out how to make sure that they stay in Gaines. Um, and I think even given the recent acknowledgement from the Power Commissioner Robinson that Gaines was a community-building project, and it means a lot. And so when the families showed up to that meeting and, and the parents about the importance of what this does with their children's trajectory, it, it, um, it was important that we made that happen. So I really appreciate it that they are there, um, and the accolades. I don't know if that's maybe just, they're not communicating to our staff to maybe get PR up so that we can share some of those accolades. I would love to be able to do that, I think that's very important. Um, on a different note, uh, uh, obviously Halloween's tomorrow, but the city had their Halloween event last week, and it was so much fun. Uh, I've been to a few because I have a daughter that age who want, I just, I'm taking her to all these Halloween events. I think ours was the best. I mean, I, I judged the Halloween, um, costumes. There's almost like thirty adults who entered into this. Um, but there was different age groups and just the most adorable little kids to funny adults. And, and then to top it off, walking around and seeing all of the staff out there ready and willing to give candy and the games. Just a free, fun event for families and people just enjoying the music. We stayed way longer than my child's bedtime just because we were having so much fun. So I really appreciate it, and I feel like those things really make, make community as well. And so I was, I was proud to walk around and see all the beautiful, um, family fun. And then finally, uh, uh, as usual, our Meet the Chief meeting. I love to give these announcements. It's on November eighth at six thirty at Gaines Park. Please be there for all the North End and, and some of the northern part of the downtown district as well. We have great discussions and I want to continue them so that our police are active and doing their part to help the community. Thank you. Oh, and happy Halloween.
Thank you. Commissioners, uh, first of all, congratulations, uh, Commissioner Fox, on the, uh, recent recognition, uh, that you received. Um, and, uh, also thank you for being there when we presented the proclamation to, uh, proclaiming October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. But speaking of proclamations and, I don't know, Commissioner Ward or you and Ms. Johnson, if you want to tell the, uh, football team if they've got these, uh, successes, and, and we are happy, you can speak up to it, uh, to, to publicize those. I, I just didn't know. And so, um, if they get that information to us, we will certainly find a way to give them some recognition. So if you could pass that word on to them, let them know. Uh, I did have the occasion last Wednesday to present a proclamation to a group of, uh, Palm Beach Atlantic student pharmacists and their college dean proclaiming October as American Pharmacists Month. And, um, yeah, I wear a mustache all year round, so obviously my physical health is top of mind. Okay, awards. Uh, the International Festivals and Events Association is the premier association supporting festival and event professionals worldwide. Uh, I recently, uh, shared that they awarded the city of West Palm Beach with twenty-three awards, twelve gold, six silver, and five bronze for its community events. I'm so proud of our community events team for their dedication to deliver outstanding events and entertainment, uh, for both residents and visitors. Um, not the least of which obviously is our Green Market, uh, Holiday in Paradise. I mean, they, they just come up with so much, uh, creativity. Uh, include Fourth on Flagler, uh, Climatis by Night, and so much more, and such imagination. Uh, so congra- congratulations to the special events team. Did want the public to know that there will be a regional special ops marine dive rescue drill at Curry Park, which started today. The Special Operations Branch of the Palm Beach County Fire Chiefs Association, uh, will conduct a multi-agency training drill from, uh, today through Thursday, November second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, there'll be morning and afternoon training sessions each day. The drill will simulate a scenario involving a disabled vessel with role players on the boat and in the water, as well as training props to represent submerged victims. Participants include air, marine, and dive rescue units from Martin and Palm Beach County Fire Departments, in addition to law enforcement personnel from the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office and West Palm Beach Police Department. I, I say this because there may be a traffic flow impact, uh, to Flagler Drive, uh, on those days, and one boat ramp will be used in the exercise and unavailable to the public. So, uh, please govern yourselves accordingly. I'm also excited to share, uh, that, that our communications team and, uh, you know, since we've brought Diana on, she, she just, they're, they're doing wonderful things. So we, they, they've created two brand-new digital offerings. Uh, Why West Palm Beach is a video series which highlights local businesses that have chosen to establish themselves in our great city. These businesses spanning both large and small entrepreneurial ventures uh, believe in the positive direction that West Palm Beach is headed. So I encourage you, uh, to, uh, watch and learn about electric power, affiliated development, Pump House Coffee Roaster in the old Warehouse District, Day-by-Day Shop in Old Northwood Village, Gypsy Life Surf Shop, and Zapido's Restaurant. I, I came up with the concept of Why West Palm. You know, a- as we go out and, and you, you, you all attend some of them to these ribbon cuttings, uh, in various locations in our city, and, and I, I make a habit of just asking the owners, why did you choose our city? What, what, what is it about West Palm Beach and the stories that you hear? Uh, so I, I, I sat down with communications team. I said, we need to, to capture these stories. Didn't really have, uh, a, a particular purpose in mind, but I figured if we could capture those stories and have a video library of, 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 of these stories, it would be helpful. So they're starting to display those. Um, and I believe you just go to, yeah, go to the city's website, wpb.com, Office of the Mayor, uh, on the city and government pages, and there, there'll be links to that. The second, uh, offering are, are city sitter podcasts, which highlight many of the great things in and, and about our city. Uh, listen to some behind-the-scenes insights and learn from some of the department directors, uh, that provide, uh, our residents with essential services every day. And, uh, can help, uh, residents discover all that is West Palm Beach. Again, it kind of gives you a glimpse behind the scenes, uh, from the mouths of, uh, directly from, uh, the workers and the directors. That also can be accessed at the city's website, uh, on, on my page. Uh, city's website, wpb.com, Office of the Mayor, Keith A. James, on the city and government pages. Uh, so it's, uh, a- a- again, an effort for us as a city, uh, to get our own story out there, uh, and, and to, uh, take control of the narrative about, uh, all the wonderful things that, uh, are happening here. So, uh, please, if you get a chance, uh, take a look at that. Also, we have another evening of memorable jazz coming up on November fifteenth. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of town and will have to miss it. This is a, another, uh, um, uh, ver- another show in our Soul in the City, uh, series. Uh, Tito Puente Junior, uh, is, uh, the performer. Uh, he is a renowned, uh, artist that's celebrated in casinos, performing arts centers, uh, symphony halls, and jazz festivals worldwide, uh, tremendous reputation. Tickets are still available, so please visit wpb.com for complete details. And, and a point of personal privilege, and I, I was thinking about whether or not I should say this, but I'm gonna say it. Um, I had the unfortunate, uh, occasion, uh, to attend two funerals uh, within the last, uh, month of, uh, gentlemen who I had worked with, uh, when, when I, when I first came to West Palm Beach as a lawyer. And, uh, they're, they're, they're age contemporaries. And, and I know you all aren't near my age yet, but, uh, one day you'll get there. Uh, but, but I, and I say that to say that life just isn't guaranteed. Uh, it, it was interesting because I went to one funeral and, and I saw, uh, a gentleman at the funeral who I used to practice law with, got a call the next day, the next morning, that the gentleman who I'd seen at the first funeral, he himself had died. Uh, so it just shows how sudden life can be snuff, snuffed away from us all. So I just encourage, uh, uh, anyone in the sound of my voice, you, uh, members of the dais, and, and I'm gonna say this, and, and please don't take it the wrong way, but I love each and every one of you. Uh, and I think the, the city, if they knew what you give to the, I mean, the public service, would have a better appreciation. But, uh, if, if I never told you that, and I, and I'm saying that obviously in a respectful way, I, I want you to know that I love you and, and, and be- because of the hard work that you devote to our city on behalf of our residents and the businesses that call West Palm Beach home. And, and I think as we go about our day-to-day, uh, we, we, we probably take life for granted. But please don't. Hug your loved ones, kiss your kids, and just let folks know, know that, that they're loved and appreciated. So tomorrow is Halloween. Have a happy and safe Halloween, everyone. I saw the statistics somewhere that, uh, that is, there's a spike for, uh, deaths of children, uh, on, on Halloween. So please be careful. Also, I want to remind everyone that Friday, November ninth, is Veterans Day, City Hall and the Mandel Public Library will be closing on this important day. And to all who have served in the American military, thank you for your service. That's all I have. God bless America, God bless the great city of West Palm Beach, and God bless each and every one of you. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.